Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024 Clay County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. A few housekeeping rules. Tonight, we will hear four cases. We will begin with a report from the planning and zoning staff that will summarize each case prior to any discussion with the board members. We will then ask the applicant to step up to the podium to ask or answer any questions and present support of their application. We ask the applicant to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation that may support the case being heard, and then anyone that may oppose the case being heard. Again, asking any participant to begin by stating their name and their address. Please remember the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. The purpose of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to decide if the cases heard tonight are to be approved or denied. The decision on cases heard tonight must be appealed within seven days of the Planning and Zoning Commission decision to the Clay County Commission. The County Commission will review and decide the cases heard tonight at their December 12th, 2024 meeting at 6:00 PM in this room. Although some cases will not go to the County Commission, please confirm with planning and zoning staff if your case will or will not go before the County Commission. Could we begin tonight with a roll call of attendance, please?
Yes, Chairman. Randall Morris.
Here.
Mark Beggs.
Present.
Tom Decker. Jerry Nolte.
Here.
Mike Brinkley.
Present.
David Rotis.
Present.
Tom Degenhart.
Here.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Present.
Could we have a motion to approve the minutes from our August, from our, sorry, September meeting as presented?
I make a motion to approve September 3rd, 2024 meeting minutes as presented.
Do I have a second? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mark Beggs.
Approved.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very well. The first case we will hear tonight is case number December 24-112V. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. I would like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
Yes, please.
Alrighty, so, uh, this is a utility easement vacation request that deals with a replat that has already been, went through our administrative process and was approved on November 5th. So really, um, what this, the purpose of this, um, really is to clean up the, the utility easements that were on the property lines before they made this lot line adjustment. And there, we plan to, or with that change of the utility easements, we're adding to the new parts, new parts of the, the lot line, uh, that replace those essentially. So, uh, to keep it simple, it's a, it's a lot line adjustment. What we're doing here is just cleaning up the, the lines on the plat. If you look on the screen there in that red, that's the current, as it sets right now, utility easement. And the proposal is this, essentially what they're doing is they're swapping triangles at, at the north part of the property and where that old triangle was, they're at the pond, swapping it. Um, and then we're just adding new utility easements around the new property lines. Uh, let's see here. Uh, so this is the approval criteria for any vacation. Uh, staff believes that this has been properly met. The, another part of the process is reaching out, uh, to utility providers in the area, uh, making sure that it, they do not have any objection to the vacation of the easement. As of up to, or up to today, we have not received any objections to the request. Platte Clay Electric has responded, but they had no questions with it. Uh, staff is recommending approval with the one condition, and that condition is to record the resolution of this vacation with the final plat. Staff would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners might have and the applicant is present.
Does anyone on that board have any questions? I don't think so. Thank you. Would the applicant please step forward and state your name and address?
Jeff Barnett, 3201 South Elizabeth Avenue, Independence, Missouri, 64057.
Do you have anything to present to support the application?
Uh, the only thing, the, the green lines you had on there, if you want to pull that up, and it was off a little bit there.
Yeah, it's not serving great accuracy.
Yeah, and I will say those, those, those lines on the screen are just us, uh, trying to predict it, so that's not going to be totally accurate.
Yeah, so the green triangle where it goes back that way, it actually just goes straight again. So, that pond is no longer there, so the, the pond's been knocked out and filled in. Um, so just where it goes back, instead of angling back towards the back of the tree line there, it just goes straight again, is all. But it's the same, all we did was trade about a third of an acre with our neighbors, that's all we did. Other than that, that was, I'm like, all I had to say.
Do you understand the staff's report, other than their drawing?
Yeah, yeah. They've got the correct drawing, they've shown me before, so.
Do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so.
Okay, does anybody on the board have any questions? Alright, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Any other discussion from the board? Can I have a motion for the case being heard for the vacation?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next case that we're going to hear tonight is December 24-113RZ/P. It's a request for rezoning and preliminary plat approval. Can I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. Would like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
Yes, please.
So, got the property pulled up on the screen, it's outlined in yellow. You will notice in your staff reports that staff recommended continuance on this case. So I wanted to kind of discuss that first. So, there is on your plats, a little area in the northeast corner of the property that's included in the plat. During the process of reviewing this case, the GIS mapping department, uh, brought it to the attention of the planning and zoning department that there was an ownership, uh, concern about who owned that section of land. So, we involved the county councilor, um, the mapping department did the deed research, and at this point, we cannot determine that that should be included with this property. So in talking with the applicant, they have agreed to remove that from the plat so they can move forward and deal with that in the future. So, everything in yellow is what will be included on the plat now. And, uh, it's unplatted, it's zoned agricultural. The proposal is to divide it into four lots. So I'll do some really bad drawing again, but there's a large 20-acre lot in the back, and then three, five to seven acre lots in the front, and this red is indicating an access easement through the front lot to the back lot. Since this area over here was part of that 20, uh, it's actually 32 acres, so it does not affect the zoning. That lot does not require agricultural land preservation, so by changing the plat, it really doesn't affect that lot, it still meets all the standards that we have. The proposal is to rezon the front lots to R5, which is our standard for lots that are between five and 10 acres. The la, uh, the back lot would stay zoned agricultural. The front lots have the agricultural land preservation, and the access is off of Old BB Highway. With any rezoning, we look at our rezoning criteria. Staff believes these have been addressed, um, and do not have concerns with this case, including the comprehensive plan. Now we do, um, it's been a unique year for, um, planning and zoning because of our next case that we're going to talk about, the comprehensive plan, is we've been trying to educate, uh, property owners on the existing comprehensive plan, and then what's coming down the pipe with the update to the comprehensive plan. This property is unique because the five to 20-acre lot is consistent with the current plan, and with the draft version of the update to the comprehensive plan, it is also consistent with that, that version as well. So we do not have concerns with this one. Uh, you can see the, this is the surrounding area. This is an area where there's a lot of three to five acre lots that were, uh, subdivided it only, mostly in the seventies and eighties, and then there is still large lot agricultural to the east, so it is a blend of residential and ag zoning. We have not received any opposition to this case. We went through our public notice requirements, which included the newspaper, posting a sign on site, and sending letters. The applicant has received all their outside agency approvals. Again, we're, we're trying to create buildable lots where one single family home could be built per lot, so we've contacted Road and Bridge, Health Department, Water District, and Fire District, and staff is recommending approval with three conditions, uh, changes to the recording copy of the plat, and then a shared driveway agreement for the two lots with the shared access, and a pond inspection on the existing pond. And I will add that, um, with the final, I will ask you to add, if you approve, I'll ask you to add a condition that that, uh, piece of property that we talked about be removed from the plat. Now technically, it won't be a fourth condition, it'll, it'll be added to the condition, uh, that deals with the recording copies of the plat. So there still will be three conditions that, uh, that first condition will just have an extra item that they'll need to comply with, and the applicant has agreed to that condition as well. So, the applicant is present, I believe, um, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does anybody on the board have any questions?
Yeah, so that piece of property we approved of flat, um, is that going to be a landlocked piece up there?
Well, in the research with the deeds that we have, and Andy, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I, we believe it belongs to the property up here, so it, it's part of another property. Now, there's, there's more that goes into it, there's a life estate that is part of it, so if, if it's determined that the applicant owns that property, they would need to come back and do a replat and add it to this property. They understand that and have, their priority is to move forward with what they have now and try to deal with the rest later. Uh, again, we have took the advice of County Council and, and are trying to move forward with this project.
So how do you enforce that after you've approved the plat?
Well, we do that without get, we would not give out building permits, uh, is the enforcement on the property until it was fixed.
Yeah.
We would flag the property at that point.
Any other questions?
So you're not going to issue permits for the big blue chunk, not just the triangle of the park, right?
It, we would flag the big blue chunk because that's what it should go with, and the triangular part.
Would the applicant please step forward and state your name and address?
Kathleen Baker, 812 North Grove Street, Kearney, Missouri, 64060.
Do you have anything to present to support your application?
I do, but at this time, uh, with the conversation to have a KIP, um, I will not be presenting anything today.
Okay. Do you understand the staff's report?
I do.
Are you okay with the condition and the additional condition that he's stating that we will add?
I do.
Okay.
I would like to add that there are two title insurance policies, both from the owners up to the northeast as well as ourselves, where it is a non-transferable life estate clause, and they both have a title insurance policies with real estate attorneys approving the 2.33 acres.
Okay, so that's an issue that you're willing to take on after?
I am more than happy, um, to amend it and do as required at a later date.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
None.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I apologize. Did anybody have any questions? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Any comments from the board? Can I have a motion for the case being heard for the rezoning?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
So to clarify, that's a motion to approve, then?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve and has been seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I have a motion for the case being heard for the approval of the preliminary Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Randall Morris.
Yes.
Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next case that we're going to hear tonight is December 24-114F, which is the request for the final plat approval for the item we just discussed. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, would like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
Yes, please.
Uh, so the Land Development Code requires the, uh, final plat be approved separate from the preliminary plat. It basically says if the final plat is compliant or matches the preliminary plat, then it should be approved. Um, staff is recommending, uh, approval because it is consistent with the, uh, preliminary plat. Obviously, that should say three conditions, and I would request that, uh, you add a condition requiring that 3.26 acre piece be removed from the plat. And I would be happy to answer any questions we may have, and I believe the applicant is, uh, she is present.
Please step forward and state your name and address again.
Kathleen Baker, 812 North Grove Street, Kearney, Missouri, 64060.
Since this is approval of the final plat, is there any additional comments that you'd like to make?
No, KIP is a joy.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment supporting the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Any questions from the board? Any comments? Can I have a motion for the case being heard for approval of the final plat?
Motion to approve the final plat?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
And do, are we adding the?
We want to add the additional condition as we did on the preliminary.
Yes. Is that good enough, or do we need to go back and?
We can have a motion to approve with the additional conditions?
Uh, motion to approve with the additional conditions.
Can we have a second?
Second.
If that's satisfactory, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Randall Morris.
Yes.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the last case of the night is the one that I think everybody is here for, case number December 24-115A. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman. Would like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
Yes, please.
Can I just bear with me while I get the other presentation up? So, we're going to talk about the Clay County Compass 2040. Uh, as the Planning and Zoning Commission is aware, we started the process of updating the comprehensive plan that was approved in 2008, in June of last year. Uh, as you're also aware, we, uh, the county contracted with Olson Studio as our consulting firm, uh, and they have done the, the heavy lifting up to this point, but I thought it was important that I stand in front of the County Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission to detail the draft final plan, because it is going to be myself and my staff, um, standing in front of you on a monthly basis, telling you whether these projects do or don't meet the, the update to the comprehensive plan. So that's why I'm in front of you here tonight. Um, we're going to talk about basically three topics. Uh, I'm going to give you some background info on the current plan, the draft new plan, some plan highlights, and then kind of where we go from here. So I thought we'd start with what is a comprehensive plan? A comprehensive plan examines what a community is, where it came from, and crafts a coordinated roadmap for the future. This roadmap guides the growth and development of the county for the next 20 years, and is revisited often to ensure its relevance. So a couple things here. We expect this to be a living document. That, you would think, once this gets adopted, that's when the hard work is over. We don't see it that way. We, we are planning to revisit this at least once a year with the Planning and Zoning Commission, take public comments on it, and it can be amended, changed, deletions, additions, um, as the county grows and changes, and as we find things that do and don't work, they can be changed. Uh, I also want to make sure that everybody's aware that when Olson started working on this project, they looked at the entire, entire county of Clay. Everything, inside city limits, outside, but the land use map, which I assume is going to be the major discussion that we have from the folks behind us, is only for the unincorporated sections of Clay County. We obviously do not regulate inside the city limits. Now I do want to talk about what a comprehensive plan is not. It is not a zoning amendment. We are not changing any zonings. This, if this, when this gets approved, it will not change anybody's zonings. It is not annexation, has nothing to do with annexation. There is a part, portion of the plan where Olson talked to each individual city, and they, uh, declared which areas they wanted to annex in the future, because we don't want to do anything that's going to inhibit the cities from annexing if that's how the county develops. But this does not involve any annexations. And then, this is kind of the start of the whole process, because our rules and regulations, and I'll just show everybody the book, are in our Land Development Code. So this is our day in and day out rules, this has, this tells us how many, uh, how wide a lot needs to be, uh, how many animals you can have. Obviously, this needs to correlate with the comprehensive plan. So Shane's the lucky guy that's already started the revision to the Land Development Code, because we're going to have to revise this document as well. Um, now we, we'll talk about that as this presentation goes along, but just understand that we're not changing the day in and day out regulations, and the comprehensive plan is just a guide for how the, the county, mainly the unincorporated sections, should develop over the next 20 years. So let's talk about the timeline a little bit. So it, it was broken down into four periods. As I stated, it started in June of '23, that's when Olson started the discovery phase. They looked at the entirety of Clay County, they also looked at our current plans, like the Parks Master Plan, our current comprehensive plan, anything that was relevant. Um, in September of '23, that's when the engagement section started. Now I'm going to talk about the engagement section quite a bit during this presentation, and it has gone from September of '23 to today, basically. And I'll list off everything we've done to try to engage the public. All that engagement was taken, and that's how this plan was created. I cannot stress enough that Planning and Zoning and Olson did not lock ourselves in the office and we didn't cut, we didn't draft this plan. It was from all of those touchpoints, all of that input that was taken, uh, throughout that engagement period. A draft plan was created, it went out for public review, comments were taken, it was revised, again, it went out for public review, it was revised, and that's the, the current plan that is in front of you today. So, let's talk about the proposed plan. So that, that plan is based on public input, existing conditions, previous plans, common planning practices, and Clay County communities and stakeholder input. That included you alls, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the County Commission, county departments, cit, there was a citizen stakeholder committee that was created. There were focus groups, we actually had six focus groups. We had a, a unincorporated business owner focus group, uh, that gave input. We had a, um, farmer's focus group that gave, um, input. We had a, Olson went to Kearney High School to do a geography class, got input. There was a senior citizen group that gave input, and there were two HOAs in unincorporated Clay County that were part of that, those focus groups and gave input. In addition to that, there were surveys that were on the Clay County Compass website. We received, I believe it was 728 completed surveys, and a mailer was sent out roughly in September of '23 to roughly 6,400 unincorporated parcels. Uh, that placard or, or postcard, for lack of a better term, basically said, "The county's starting this process, we need your input, here's how you can become involved in that process." Uh, and then in addition to everything, all of those, Olson had meetings with outside agencies, which included fire districts, water districts, school districts, uh, Clay County Health Department, um, I know I'm forgetting, oh, Clay County Economic Development Committee, or Council. Uh, they also met with every local city and, and got input from those local cities. We talked about the focus group, county staff was involved, there were two in-person public open houses and two virtual, uh, open public houses, and there was some additional outreach that we'll talk about here in a minute. So, let's talk about the plan a little bit, and again, this is high level. I didn't, I printed off, this actually isn't the whole plan, this is a portion of it, but it's a very large document, obviously I'm not going to touch on everything tonight, um, but wanted to hit some highlights. It's, it's broken into eight sections and four appendices. Section three is the land use section, and I'm going to show you that map, uh, because I expect that's what we're going to have most discussion over, um, today. And then section six is the environmental section. Uh, the reason I bring that up is one of the common themes through all that public input was trying to save the rural nature of Clay County, saving the prime farmland, the wildlife, the flood plain, the streams, uh, that, the, there were maps at all those events, asking people where the development should occur and where it should not occur. And the common theme was that we should save that rural nature of Clay County. And then section eight is a very important section, it's the action plan and implementation section. That's where all of the goals and strategies are, that my staff is going to coordinate over the next 20 years, uh, trying to achieve as many of those strategies and goals as we can. Now we're going to have to work with various county departments and various outside agencies to achieve those goals, because that's how we can best implement the plan. And then the appendices, um, basically give you a summary of the process. I will tell you, I, I found the public engagement summary very interesting, because as you read through those comments, um, you can see, you can tie those comments back to the plan and see how the plan was crafted because of all those comments that were received. So, I'm going to take a step back a little bit, because I want to talk about the current plan, because I think there's some confusion about the, the current plan. So this is the land use map from the current plan, which was approved in 2008, and if I didn't say, I should have said that a, a comprehensive plan probably should be updated every 10, 15, at the most 20 years. Uh, so this was, we're right in, within that range of doing an update. So, I'm going to do some really bad drawing again. So, with all these land use maps, anything in gray, you can see, there's Liberty, Kearney, Excelsior, Smithville, inside city limits don't have jurisdiction, so anything in color is unincorporated Clay. And it's basically broken down into three tiers. The yellow tier around Smithville Lake is the natural resources tier, the salmon or pink area is the urban services tier, and the green area is the rural low-density tier, it's the northern and eastern section of the county. Now, when the 2008 plan was drafted, the overall thought process and consensus was that 20-acre lots were allowed throughout the county. That was basically the base, base guidance, is you should do 20 acres everywhere. Okay? Now there's always exceptions, because it's planning and zoning, we can't make stuff easy, so we've got to make it difficult. So, the, the first exception, basically countywide, was what was called a farmstead dwelling. And it was basically any property that had a house that was built pre-1985, you could subdivide it on a five-acre parcel. So, we have a 1985 aerial in the office, and if you came to us and said, "Hey, I want to put five acres around this house," and it was on the 85 aerial, that would meet the comprehensive plan. The other exception was for the rural low-density tier, which is the green tier, and the pink urban services tier. and the pink urban services tier, was it called for suburban and urban density, but that density had to be on municipal-level services, which means enclosed sewers, obviously water, electricity, all the services you would expect in the city, but not on septic systems. So you could do an interior street subdivision if you met the rezoning criteria in those two areas, if you provided municipal-level services. Now, that was not allowed around Smithville Lake. So that was the overall 2008 plan. Now, when that plan was created, the consultant gave the county two options to implement the plan. The first option was just do what I just described, 20 acres everywhere. Otherwise, you have to meet that farmstead dwelling, or you have to do that interior street subdivision with municipal-level services. The other option was an exemption table, and it was meant to be a transition period, because it was a big change going from the '97 plan to the 2008 plan. And this exemption table granted smaller lots in each district. In the yellow and the green, it would allow you to do a five-acre lot if you met the other requirements, and in the pink area, it would allow you to do a 10-acre lot. However, that was supposed to be temporary. Now, the issue is, the county never got rid of that. So since 2008, the county's been allowing those five- and 10-acre lots. So I think there's mass confusion about that, because the county didn't implement that correctly, in my opinion. We should have phased that out. The Planning and Zoning Commission should have made that choice at some point, but the county never did that. So that's the 2008 plan. Again, the highlights are the 20-acre minimum, the farmstead dwelling on five acres, the denser lots if on municipal level services, and the exemption table, which was designed to be temporary, allowing the five- and 10-acre lots with the agricultural land preservation. And I know that's a lot of information, so feel free to interrupt me if you have questions before I move on to the current plan. Any questions on that? Okay, so we're going to go to the, this is the land-use map for the Clay County Compass 2040. So again, gray areas, city limits, no jurisdiction. First area I'm going to talk about is this managed-growth area. It is adjacent to the city limits. It is designed to be an area, if we have development there, that county staff would work with city staff to see if that development fit within the city's annexation areas, and to make sure that the county does not do anything that would inhibit the city annexing if both parties chose to annex in the future. Now, that's not dissimilar to what we have now, because every project we have within a mile and a half of a city, we reach out to that city and reach out for comments. But this area does not give us a lot-size requirement, because Kansas City may be different than Liberty. Kansas City may want fully-developed lots, or Liberty may want three-acre lots. So it does not give us guidance on the lot size in this area. The second area, in gold, right outside that area, is a residential area that is designed to be three-plus acres. Then you go further out in the tan, which is some areas of northeast, and then between Kansas City and Liberty up to 92 Highway, is designed as residential five-acre areas. Then around Smithville Lake, and then somewhere north of Carney and Excelsior Springs, in that light green, is an ag zoning area, which is 20-plus acres. Then you go to this medium green, northern Clay County, excuse me, and east of Liberty, is a 40-acre area. And then you'll notice some in blue that is open preserve, excuse me, open space natural preserve, which is some area around Watkins Mill and Cooley Lake, and it contains most of the floodplain within Clay County. And it is designed to, if there's development in that area, it should be scrutinized, basically, to make sure that the development would not affect the floodplain, stormwater, wildlife, that sort of thing. So not saying that development couldn't occur there, but it needs to be designed in a way to protect that. It basically becomes a preservation area. And then, and I didn't talk with the '08 plan, and I should have, but there are some commercial industrial areas along the major highways, 92 Highway, 35, 69, and that is consistent with the highway corridor tiers with our current plan. The current plan calls for that as well. Now, I think there's maybe some confusion. I don't expect 92 Highway to fully develop commercially in the next 20 years. The plan is specific that any kind of commercial development should occur at a major intersection, or it should occur close to the city and be pushed out by that commercial development from the city. So again, even though all of 92 Highway is, from Smithville to Carney, is designed as commercial, it's basically setting that aside. Now, if we get a residential application in there, then we'll look at that and make sure it doesn't inhibit any prime commercial areas. And so residential could be allowed in there, but we have to look at it and see what the proposal is. So I don't expect the next five years, 92 Highway, to be totally commercial. And obviously, if commercial development does occur there, there's going to have to be some major improvements to 92 Highway as well, to handle that. So that's the proposed land-use map. Again, the highlights are the managed-growth area, adjacents to cities, those smaller lots, three to five acres, then the 20 acres, 40 acres, preservation areas. Really, the object is to direct the development to the cities, which the current comprehensive plan does. Then, once we get outside their annexation areas, to do large-lot residential, then to go to larger-lot residential, then to go to ag, and then to go to preserve areas. So that's how this was designed, to try to allow some development, but allow that development in the right place, so we don't end up with, you know, Johnson Ridge out in the middle of a bunch of farmland on a private sewer system, like we have in the past. So how are we going to use the plan? Really, this is a vision of the future for how Clay County is going to develop over the next 20 years. It's used as a decision-maker for county officials, elected officials, Planning and Zoning Commission, my staff. We will use the land-use map on a daily basis, and it also tells citizens, if you're own property or a buying property, a clear development pattern for Clay County. What kind of development can you expect around your property? So let's talk about next steps. So in October, the County Commission voted six to zero to recommend adoption of this plan. Now, this is the one unique case that goes to County Commission first, then comes to Planning and Zoning Commission for adoption. So it's basically backwards. Usually, you advise the County Commission. Now, they're advising you. Obviously, we're in front of you tonight. Public education is going to be continuous. Our plan, again, is to bring this back to you at least once a year, see what's working, see what's not working. And then, we are also going to have public meetings to invite the public, for them to be able to ask questions, give comments, just with Planning and Zoning staff as well. And then, as I mentioned, the Land Development Code Amendment, we've already started it. The hope is to get some of that done next year, but it's probably going to bleed into 2026. And that's where a lot of the detailed work needs to be done, because like, as I stated, a lot of the discussion was saving wildlife areas, stream corridors, things like that. So those regulations would come in the Land Development Code. Do we increase the stream setback? Do we require, if it's a major development, do we require a tree inventory? You know, whatever that is, that will be in the Land Development Code. And then, those goals and strategies, my department will work with every county department that's involved, as well as outside agencies, to achieve as many of those goals and strategies as possible. Now, my last slide is every touchpoint.
I've got a quick question. You're going to bring this back to us every year. So what metrics are you going to use to determine whether it's working or not? What does that look like?
Well, that's a very good question. I think a lot of it's going to be the public comment that we get from citizens as we do the cases, and as we have those public meetings, what kind of comments are we getting? Now, my next slide, I'm going to talk about kind of my frustration with getting input on the plan, because we have had trouble. I'm so happy the room's full tonight, because this is the most interest we've had in this in the last year and a half. So I'm really looking forward to hearing what the comments are. But that's something we're going to have to work on. So I wanted to list every attempt that mainly Olson made to reach out to the public. So they went to the Liberty Fall Fest in 2023 and 2024. They went to Jesse James Days in 2023 in Carney. They went to Halloween in the Park in North Kansas City in 2023, Gladfest in Gladstone in 2023. We talked about those six focus groups that were involved. We talked about the mailers that were sent to the unincorporated citizens. There was a dedicated website that included the survey. There were social media, press releases, a project kickoff video, email blasts. The presiding commissioner was kind enough to do some media associated with the comprehensive plan. It was on the news, on the radio. Olson met with each city within Clay County. They met with the school districts. They met with those outside agencies, including water districts, road and bridge, health department, EDC, Carney Fire District. There was a countywide charrette, which was a two-day planning event that included the citizen-stakeholder committee. There were two open public houses in person. There were two virtual open public houses, public open houses. There was a joint Planning and Zoning and County Commission meeting that was noticed. And there were those two draft plan review periods. So that was the attempt made to get input. Like I said, I would have loved more input. I'm happy with what we did, but I'm happy to hear the comments that we get tonight. So I've talked enough, and my throat hurts, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but that's where we're at with this.
Any questions? Thank you. This is the public participation part, and because we do have so many people in the audience, and I'm assuming that each and every one of you would like to speak, unless there happens to be a group where you have a dedicated or nominated speaker, we're going to have to limit everybody's time. I would like to limit this to no more than three minutes per comment, if at the three-minute mark. And can one of you please keep a timer for us? If there is something in addition after the three minutes, we'll have a discussion about whether you can continue, or whether we'll move you to the back of the line and start again. So this is going to be for comments that support the plan. That's what we're going to begin with. And if we can, let's start on this side of the room, front row. We're going to work our way down, back, and we're going to zigzag until we get to the back of the room. This is for comments that support. Everybody else will get their chance. So does anybody want to speak in support of the plan? Please step to the mic and state your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Kathy Shack, and I live in the little green 20-acre area east of the lake. And I just wanted to say I really support the 20 acres that they have listed on this sheet, because something happened in our neighborhood. We've been out there for years and years, and we all live on 20. Some people live on 10 acres, but they started splitting it up. And the one thing, I was glad to hear him say something about the roads, and not only zoning, but you have to look at the roads. If anybody would like, any of you guys sitting there would like to go and drive down 168th Street, you'll see what splitting our beautiful land up has done to our roads, because dump trucks come. We all have horses. We can't even ride down a road anymore, because you have Amazon, and it's like I'm living in a subdivision, and it's really sad. So I'm glad to see that we're going to support the 20 acres, and I'm really happy about that. And I just wanted to step up and say that. So any questions for me?
Any questions?
And I know there's a budget for roads, and our road people just come and dump asphalt. And we've gone through tires and front-end alignments. My husband's tires are always popping something to have to go get something done. I don't even know what that is, but it's pretty rough where we live, because we have chopped it down from 20 acres. Some people split it up to five acres. And I know that sounds like a lot to you guys, but when you have horses, you have to consider the Fourth of July also. People are still shooting fireworks off a week after the Fourth. My horses run us over. And anybody in this room that has livestock, they know what I'm talking about. We're not like a little subdivision or suburbia. We have livestock that will run us over, and it's dangerous. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in support?
Yeah, Myra Neff, 1826 Surrey, Liberty. Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to say I support the entire plan. I'm not going to go as far as I think you need to be specific about that. There's parts of the plan that you may, whatever. Overall, I mean, I'm always for kind of a planning thing, and probably, given a lot of our family land is in the dark green areas, I have been a proponent of keeping larger tracts as much as we can. You know, I think last year I was in here talking to you all about a deal that was close to us. It was getting split up into 20 acres and so forth. And I do like seeing the 40-acre thing, because I mean, you know, the county will eventually grow, and it will keep on growing. It'll split. This will change again in 20 years, kind of a thing, and we'll need to do that. But overall, I like that aspect of trying to keep some larger plots of land. And I get the idea of, you know, private property rights, being able to do what you want and all that, and I get that. And I guess I would encourage, and I'm saying to you all and maybe the commission when the time comes, is I think there needs to be some good processes for exceptions. For example, say somebody's got a large piece of property, and they want to, you know, section off maybe a five acres to sell to a family member, you know, to say they want to build a house, kind of a thing. You know, maybe some one- or two-time exceptions, kind of a thing, so you don't split it all up. But, you know, some good exceptions. They need to sell to make some money, great, whatever, kind of a thing. So but as far as that aspect of the plan, I mean, I am supportive of, in those very rural parts of keeping large tracts as much as we can. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I'm Carla Dodds, and actually, my address is 5308 Bluff Way in Parkville, Missouri. But I'm here as a member of the Stakeholder Committee that helped lay the foundation for the 2040 Compass Plan. And I'm here to encourage you to adopt this plan. I commend the Clay County staff and the consultant team for the work that they have done over these many months to put together a balanced and inclusive plan, and trying to work with all the different viewpoints that this county has. I actually did live in Clay County as part, early in my 37 years, of living in the Kansas City area. And I was invited to be on the Stakeholder Committee, because I recently retired as an environmental professional. And so my work experience is in environmental protection and also working for public engagement and planning consulting firms. I worked on the Lee Summit Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Leavenworth, Kansas Comprehensive Plan. So my particular interest is with the land use section and with the environment section. And I think that the direction statements and the goals and strategies that are laid out in this plan are very thoughtful. I participated in trying to identify the highest-value wildlife habitat that needed to be protected for a variety of reasons. One of those mentioned was the stormwater and the flooding issues. I live in a Missouri River town, which floods frequently, so I completely understand those concerns and the need to look very carefully at development in those areas. So I just wanted to make a statement as a stakeholder committee member that I am very pleased with the plan, and I encourage you to adopt it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Linda Hetzel, 13318 Plattsburgh Road, Carney, Missouri. I have a long history with these planning processes. I was on the 2008 Planning Committee, and many changes, of course, have happened since then. I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm grateful for you all and your community service. I thank the Planning and Zoning staff for their hard work and standing up to the challenges that change in growth pose to all of us. I'm a small-scale food grower. I sell food to chefs and individuals in the region and have just 14 acres that is becoming enclosed by subdivision. And so I'm here to support the plan as per- And what, so I'm here to support the plan as presented, but would enjoy, appreciate, encourage some other planning process over the next 20 years, to continue to look at the larger picture, warming climate, floods, wildlife habitat, and food destruction, which touches a lot on my business, because as subdivisions surround me and wildlife, food, and habitat is wiped out, all those creatures that we depend on for our survival are pushed into my farm for food. So the sprawl is increasing my work without compensation. So I don't get compensated for all the wildlife I support while the sprawlers are compensated and celebrated for taking out wildlife, food, and habitat. So I encourage, I would like to see a sub-working group to look at larger environmental issues and growth issues, especially flooding. Eastern Missouri was flooded in October. We were lucky, we missed that one. It's not if, but when we will experience an extreme weather event, multiple. So I'd like to see much greater depth and breadth of planning. I think the county needs a fire plan. We can smell smoke now from wildfires that are getting closer all the time. So we have a lot to look out in the future. I'm grateful to our predecessors for not, for preserving the land we have to make this decision on. You know, if our predecessors had plundered, used up this space, we wouldn't have it to make the decision on. And I've spent 30 years restoring, regenerating the 14 acres, bringing back soil health, planting thousands of trees, native species. So I urge you to vote yes for this plan, knowing that we continue to work to do a better job for our descendants.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Joanne Lawson, and I am a Clay County Commissioner. I'm a Commissioner-at-large, so I cover the entire county. I live at 15609 Salem Road outside of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, 64024. I'm a country girl. I have horses. I love having that ability to live on a large piece of land without everybody around me crowding me in. But the main thing that I, when I look at this comprehensive plan, first of all, I want to say that our planning and zoning people did such a spectacular job. And I was so impressed at how hard they tried to get people involved and hear what the county had to say, what our citizens that pay taxes had to say. And I wish that there had been more people become more involved in it. We tried desperately to make sure that that was the case. I remember an evening when all of us, planning and zoning and commissions, sat down and worked on this plan and gave our input. And so I felt like it was a very collaborative effort that we did this. I want to see this plan approved. I'm begging you to approve this plan. We worked so hard to see it come. We have all kinds of options out there. People can come to you, they can come to the commission, they can make their case. Many, many times, we have approved something different than what the plan was, what was said that you could do with your particular piece of land. So that option's always out there, but I think we have to be cautious about our road and bridge. My gosh, you put a large subdivision on a small country road that up to that time has supported three families maybe. Now, all of a sudden, you've got 45 cars or more coming up and down that road. You have your chance for serious accidents, but more importantly, that road is just demolished. And then it's up to us, after a couple of years, and the developers are gone, then we've got to pick up the slack and try to be able to maintain all those roads. So I really look at this as a very planned, thoughtful way for us to develop this county, keep some of the beauty. My gosh, I moved here in 65, so I tell you how old I am, and I, it was so rural. I rode my horse down 92 Highway when we lived outside of Carney. I couldn't do that today. I'd be dead in a week. I'd be dead in an hour. So I want us to still hold on to a little bit of the rural beauty of this county, but still be able to develop the way we are. We've got a lot of land in the corporate, the city side of the county where development can go. I'd like to still try to maintain at least a little bit of our county to the beautiful rural county that it is. Thank you very much, and I sincerely ask you to vote for this plan.
Thank you. Anyone in the back?
I guess I'll go next. I hope I didn't butt in front of anybody. My name is Margot Farnsworth. I live at 7921 Northeast 168th Street. I feel privileged to be able to speak to you all tonight, and also thank you for your service, as well as Mr. Jones and his staff. I have worked with counties and municipalities in three different states on comprehensive plans and the follow-up to comprehensive plans. And one of the things, as I have worked with folks like you, businesspeople in the communities, environmental organizations and whatnot, is, yeah, and you know, I know, I know you've said, Mr. Jones, that you had a challenge in getting people to come out, but really, the number of people that attended when I was around at meetings was meant much more than other states where I've worked. And so I think that we have a lot to be proud of here in Clay County, that we have so many people that want to be involved. I would also say, you know, in looking at this map, we can clearly see the majority of the map is gray, and that's okay. We have to look out for our economic interests as well as our land-first interests, which is what the comprehensive plan says about what we're doing here. We're considering the nature and what Ms. Lawson said and what others have said, the existing nature of Clay County and the beauty and the aesthetics of this county, as well as the way of life. And so many people, in other places, I've seen one, maybe two people really come out strong for the environment, as this young lady said back here, you know, thinking forward in how we're going to have to deal with climate. You know, we're not immune to that. At the same time, we have economic interests. But one of the things I've found over time is there's one pocket for making money, and there's another pocket for saving money. And as we look at what would have to be done to the roads, as has been mentioned before, and the septic and sewer systems, the geology in this area is a prairie mosaic. And so it has clay fingers, and then it has deeper fingers of not loess, but deep top soil. And so when you get into shrinking the size of your land holdings, then you get an area that may perk or it may not perk, which for the people who want to split up land into smaller sections, doesn't end up working well for them. And then they come back to the city or the county and say, hey, we need sewer out here. So that's another expense. We're dealing with roads and having to improve roads. That's another expense. And so it's a wonderful thing to think about the fact that we can serve nature and all the people that enjoy the aesthetics that come with that, as well as wildlife and farm families and whatnot. And at the same time, we can save money by not growing out those smaller, light-green areas and instead work with what we have in the gray areas for building out further and whatnot. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? Again, we're going to start over here in the front, and we'll zigzag our way through. Is there anybody over here that would like to speak that opposes?
I will.
And we're going to limit it to three minutes again.
Sure. I'm Fred Ducard. I presented you all with a memo last week that I believe Kip provided to you all. I'm opposed because of the strictness of the restrictions that have been placed, particularly like, I live at 9701 Highway W, which is right on the north side of the Holt's Claw Creek arm of Smithville Lake. And under this plan, we're going to change from what the 2008 setup was, which would allow me to divide down to five acres so long as there are set-asides, significant set-asides, for green space, and instead be a 20-acre plot for anything that I might want to produce out of my 80-acre plot. The trouble with that for me is you're trying to put the genie back in the bottle, because everywhere around me, I'm an anomaly. And in that area, everything around me is, goes from anything from two acres to probably around 15 acres tops, but most of it is already divided. So actually, it's putting a restriction on me. And one of the things, and again, I have no criticism for any of this process in terms of how much input that you all had and got. You obviously worked your darndest to get input. But one of the things that I didn't see in any of the information about the plan or in the plan itself is the thought about the constitutional rights of the people who have property rights in those areas and what, and particularly the right to compensation to the extent a property right is taken away. The, it is, that particularly comes to me, because I would have to litigate to the extent that this got to that point. And there's, it seems to me like the plan that's already in place with some tweaks, allowing flexibility, particularly for areas that already have been developed in that particular, in those light-green and dark-green areas, is really the better way of approaching things. So I want to keep down to my three minutes, but you've got four pages from me, if you'd like to look at it, that I presented to you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Babbs, 706 East 16th Street, Carney, Missouri, 64060. I'm a concerned Clay County landowner in regard to land use portion of the Clay County Compass 2040. One of my largest concerns is the infringement of landowner rights regarding the proposed plan. It largely dictates what a landowner can and can't do in regard to the selling of their land if they choose to do so. Clay County already has requirements in place protecting citizens. First being, any parcel of land being subdivided, a public notice of rezoning is placed at the subject property, and all landowners within 1,000 feet of the property are notified with a letter informing them of the subdivide. This allows the opportunity for the citizens of Clay County to approve or oppose of the subdivide at specified Clay County planning and zoning meetings. This is at the discretion of Clay County Planning and Zoning Committee and Commissioners to approve or deny the subdivide. Secondly, regarding the maintaining of infrastructure, Clay County already has regulations in place. This includes an engineered hydraulic study, also known as a hydraulic test. This test verifies water pressure remain adequate for existing homeowners prior to adding any new water meters. Thirdly, safe ingress and egress have been assured. Another requirement, Clay County Road and Bridge or MoDOT would be needed or contacted to approve driveway permits to ensure line-of-sight requirements are met to maintain safe ingress and egress for new rural homes. In the concern to preserving agriculture, ALP acres, agricultural land preservation, have been implemented on tracks being subdivided in Clay County less than 20 acres. In conclusion, with only 1,400 Clay County community members, see page 13 of Resolution 2024-294, that were spoken to regarding this Clay County Comprehensive Plan, that should not warrant enough conclusive feedback to make this Comprehensive Plan viable. Those 1,400 community members represent 0.5% of Clay County's residents based off the 2022 census population. There are already adequate procedures in place, requirements in place, to ensure Clay County preserves agriculture, maintains current infrastructure to protect Clay County residents. Therefore, the land use of the Comprehensive Plan 2020, excuse me, 2040 Plan is unnecessary infringement of Clay County landowner rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, I just want to add one more thing. I mean, if this doesn't pertain to rezoning, why do we have commercial property all along 92 Highway? And why are we reclassifying agricultural ground as open space and natural preserve? That is clearly agricultural ground that should remain agricultural ground and not be considered open space and natural preserve. It is agricultural ground that is currently in production for agriculture, not for open space and natural preserve. It is in production. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Kurtz, my address is 16815 County Road, CC and Holt. I have got a handout that I'd like to just give.
Please hand them to Kip. Please hand them to Kip.
All it is is a map that it helped me explain what my concern is here. So again, I'm living up on the North County.
Please proceed.
Yeah, okay, yeah. My area of concern is the green agricultural area in North County there. If you look at the map that I just distributed to you, there is no parcel along Highway 33 between 188th Street and CC Highway, which is about a two-mile stretch. There is no parcel along that line that is more than 39 acres. But yet, it's in a green area that has a minimum of 40 acres. So that's just not reality, to make this a minimum of 40 acres. So this area currently is composed of several very nice acreages of 10 acres or less. There's 18 acreages of parcels that are 10 acres or less, and there's eight parcels along that road in that green area that are between 20 and 39 acres. And those parcels, those larger parcels, are what concerns me, because I own one of those. I own a parcel of 37 acres, and when I purchased it just a few years ago, I fully intended to divide that into four very nice parcels of eight to 10 acres and make some very nice home plots to be marketed. And I intend to work with, and I have been working with, one of the best home developers, I'm sure in the county, if not in the state. He has developed and built several homes, multimillion-dollar homes along C Highway there, CC Highway. But my point is, to make that a green area with a minimum of 40 acres, which really doesn't make much sense in that area, would restrict me unnecessarily, I think, and not allow me to make that division if we enforce this plan or this guide. So what I encourage you to do is to change the plan to include that area to be, I think they call it residential, estate residential, which is five acres or less, five acres or more, which is the area which is right south of that, it just borders that. And I think not to do that would put the planning and zoning administration and their staff in a bind, because they would have to enforce a plan that is really unrealistic. I mean, it is, it's kind of like this guy said, it's putting the genie back in the bottle. That bottle. That area is already much less than 40 acres. So that's my points. Any questions?
Thank you.
And Chairman, we'll add that Exhibit B to the official record.
So be it. Pun intended.
My name's John Graff. My address is 18624 Downing Road, Carney, Missouri, 64060. We own a farm north of Watkins Mill. It's been in the family for 85 years or so. I'm a farmer and developer. We went with this new plan, we went from having a five-acre minimum buildable lots to now restriction to 20-acre buildable lots. And I feel like that's a mistake, and I don't see what the purpose of it is. It seems what you're trying to do is cut off building in the northern part of the county, and I object to that. What are you going to do with 20 acres? You know, maybe that somebody might have an orchard. They might have some horses, but you really don't see many horses around anymore. Certainly are not going to be raising corn and beans. It's kind of a useless lot size, in my opinion. There are a few people out there building, you know, 5,000, 10,000 square foot homes that might like a 20-acre building lot. So that's my big deal, and it's, it just seems like a mistake, and it's something that was uncalled for in this transition from the, we're in the farm-zoned agricultural residential. I think you might as well take the residential off of that because I don't think there's going to be much residential with that, with that plan the way you have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is James Parker. I live at 103 Ash Street, Lathford, Missouri. I just wanted to point out all the green up top. I think that's really a big way of saying, when you get into 20 acres north of Carney, it's $350,000. And you're basically telling these younger families, and I'm not talking 25, 28-year-old families that are just getting started, I'm talking 30, 35, 40-year-old families that want to have a family outside of city limits, they can't afford it unless they inherit it. You know, when you get up into these 20-acre plots, 350 grand, and then you've got to build a house on it, you know, you're talking 600,000-plus dollars to get into a home up there. And, you know, a lot of these blue-collar families that live up that way, like it or not, I believe that Carney is the new Liberty. You know, it's developing very quickly. If they don't want to live in town and they want to be on the north side to kind of be out of these urban areas or in Liberty per se, it's, I just think that you're cutting all that off up there. If you go one block north into Clinton County, it's three and five-acre plots everywhere up there. And I just sold four of them up there, and they sold in four and a half hours. And that need is there. I know that the dust and the roads are an issue, but these brand-new homes that are being built on these five-acre plots are going to bring in a lot more tax revenue to help keep up with these roads than it being a 20-acre farm plot. So I just think, think of these young guys that want to be outside of city limits and it's, that's the future. Thanks.
I'm Buddy Rash. I live down here in the Bottoms, South Town, 17607 Northeast 52nd. I'm kind of wondering the determination on what decided five acres to 40 acres in different parts of the county. One lady said traffic. She was worried about traffic. Well, 92 is crazy with traffic, and yet we've got five-acre plots all along it. And these areas out here where traffic is not heavy, we're wanting 40 acres per plot. I mean, that's not, that's not something you can stand behind saying that it's traffic. Really, this whole thing is kind of a mess. Thank you.
My name is Derek Payne. I live at 28401 Northeast 177th Street in Lawson. What I want to say and to give a little bit of validity to this is, I am a licensed real estate agent, and to keep the business side out of this, because that's where most people's mind would immediately go to, it's, with this here, the way it is, and one thing, the only reason I even actually stepped up here was, am I a licensed appraiser? No. Do I give brokers' opinion of value and list farms? Almost sell nearly $25 million in farms from five acres to 300 acres every year from Kansas City all the way to the Iowa border? Yes. 95% of what I sell between Cameron and Liberty is going to be under 40 acres. Most of that is going to be 10 to 20 acres, some fives. The reason I say this is, nobody in here, these landowners that are larger landowners that were able to split down to five acres before and now have a 20 or a 40-acre minimum, their land value will absolutely go down. If all of a sudden there's a farm that had tremendous road frontage, and they ask me tomorrow to come and give them an evaluation, there is no way I can give them the same evaluation tomorrow as I could have before this if this gets approved. So the more money that they could sell that for, if they chose, not saying that anybody will or that they will, but they have that right currently to be able to split that down further than if this gets approved, their value will absolutely go down. Then, I can almost guarantee you, the assessor's office is not going to go and reassess that and take their value down and take their taxes down as well. So that's not anything I've heard these guys say yet. The last thing is, the 21-acre parcel that I've got listed south of Excelsior, I had called Kip a month or two ago, whatever it was, and had a family that are all from out of state, one of them lives here, they just moved here, they were looking forward to, and I had kids running literally all over that 21 acres, I mean, having an absolute blast. And that is actually why I like to sell these small tracks. It's not because I get to sell a five-acre piece. I mean, it's a lot easier and a lot quicker to sell a 40-plus acre tract. I do these small ones because I literally, I grew up in construction, my family owns three lumberyards. I grew up around building. So being able to give advice to that and also see all these families grow up and have the same opportunity for those kids that I had growing up on a farm, this is going to pull that away from a number of families that will no longer be able to afford to buy a 20-plus acre parcel, and they also will not be able to have as many opportunities to buy a parcel right now. So that family no longer, because we would not be able to get it through planning and zoning in time to, before this is approved, so they were absolutely devastated and almost in tears that they no longer could build three homes and split that into three seven-acre parcels, which I saw a lot of properties that size, and that was absolutely the perfect property for them and laid beautifully, and they are literally devastated because of that. So, and that's going to repeatedly happen as we move forward.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Sanders. I live at 22420 Northeast 112th Street, Liberty. I'm going to ask one question because it's directly related to something we're working on. We're building Prairiefield subdivision, which is in Clay County. We've got a preliminary plat that's all been approved. Is it going to be affected by this?
Kip, would you like to address that?
So, yeah, Bob's subdivision is adjacent to Liberty City Limits within that managed growth area, but I would consider it already an approved project because the overall plan is approved. So I would, my answer to that would be no, it would not be affected by this.
Thank you.
Okay. My next thing is, I don't know how many of you have read your residential description very carefully, but it's contradictory. It says that you can put a maximum of three lots per acre, and then at the end it says a minimum of three acres per lot. So you may want to look at that.
Yeah, and there are, it's a large document, and there are some things that we will clean up, but.
Okay. And another question.
The intent is for it to be three acres.
Another question I've got, if a child, and I think Myron may have brought it up, I couldn't hear exactly what he said, but say one of my kids or a grandkid wanted to build a home, we own quite a big ground in the green area in the kind of southeast corner, if they wanted to build a home on three acres, do I have to deed them 40 acres or sell them 40 acres, or is there going to be some exception for that?
Kip, would you like to?
Okay, so I think this kind of goes to a larger question with some of the comments that were made. So you can see with the proposed land use map, there are some areas that go directly from five acres or even three acres to 40 acres. So the comprehensive plan is a guide. It is not a hard and fast rule that you would need a variance from. So like, let's talk about the area next to Liberty where it goes from managed growth area, and actually, I might take the podium if I can, so I can draw here. So let's talk about this area over here. So City of Liberty, managed growth area, three-acre area to 40-acre area. Is it realistic going from three acres to 40 acres? No, there's going to be a transition zone. So if somebody comes to us that's adjacent and they want to propose 20 acres, 10 acres in certain areas, I think that's going to be acceptable. Same with the northern area where it goes from five to 40. There's going to be a transition zone in these areas where a 10-acre lot may be acceptable. But to answer Mr. Sanders' question, right now, if, so that's one thing the Planning and Zoning Commission could consider. Now, keep in mind, this is the proposed land use map. If you all discuss it and think there's some amendments to make to this map, you can propose amendments and you have the authority to make those amendments. And as I stated earlier, the Land Development Code is going to have some of those rules. So if there's an interest in, you know, somebody earlier, and I can't remember who said it, something about an exemption for a family member to be able to subdivide at one time, you know, five-acre lot or 10-acre lot, if that's something the commission wanted to look into, then we would, staff would take that back. That's more of a Land Development Code issue where we could put that exception in the Land Development Code that would allow something like Mr. Sanders is describing.
Yeah, I personally think that needs to be included because that whole area in that southeast corner is owned by either us, a family or other family members or larger family or farm property owners. And if you want to corner off one section for a grandkid or a kid, that needs to be in the information. My next question is, if your property lines transcend two or three of the colors and the boundaries that you've got there, how do you determine whether you're five acres or three acres or 20 acres if your property lines transcend? Wouldn't the development want to be all one or the other? And I would hope that if it was, it would be the lesser number of acres.
You're saying where the two different tiers?
Yeah, say we've got a property that's big enough that it transcends two or three of your colors, how are you going to determine which color we get?
Well, we have that issue with the current plan now because it's not always property lines.
So how do you determine that?
We generally, so, people may not believe this, but my department is very friendly to work with, and we generally want to find a way for folks, I see Fred smiling, but I know he knows, we generally want to find a way for folks to be able to do what they want to do within reason. So we generally lean, if we can find a way to do it, but if it's a, let's say you own east of Liberty, it's a three-acre area going to a 20-acre area, and your property's on that, it is in both those areas, and you propose a 10-acre lot, yes, to me, that makes sense.
But Kip, the problem we've run into in the past is, you can make the suggestion, but the commission needs to make the final decision. And if it's not in writing and it's not a part of the regulations, we have no guarantee. We can go to all the effort, and we don't have any guarantee of laughing. So I'd like to see that clarified. That's all I'm getting at.
And it's hard to address every situation.
Okay.
Now, I will say, you bring up a good point because even if, let's say this gets adopted as is, there is a path for citizens to apply and go through the process, go in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission, even if their proposal does not comply with the comprehensive plan. So there is a route for them to go, an appeal method, but I get what you're saying.
Okay.
I do want to jump in here, Kip.
Yeah, go ahead.
Two other comments.
Hold on, hold on. We're getting into some minutia here, into some specific detail that is actually in the.
Yeah, but I think they're important to talk about.
And I'm going to let you, but we're not going to have a question and answer anymore. I want you to make your comments.
I'll make a comment. Okay. Does the county realize by requiring three-acre lots instead of subdivision-type lots in certain areas, the amount of revenue that they're going to miss out on in permit fees, or does it not matter to the county?
The Planning and Zoning Commission is not concerned with that issue.
Okay. And then my next question is, one lady said, or comment is, one lady said that the county would have to cover sewer costs if the homes were built or developed in an area. That's incorrect. If sewers are put in or any of those sewer expenses, they are the responsibility of the developer. So that's it.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else?
I want to make one more, one more comment also, and that's on the roads. I know that there's been a couple of times here recently that, you know, on that stating that the roads are in rough shape, this and that, but I know for a fact that there's a couple of them that have been split recently that had to end up paying. I think one of them was 40-some thousand and one was in the 50-some thousands from road and bridge before they would allow it to go through planning and zoning. So just know that there are certain circumstances where they have had to, the developer or investor has had to pay money to have that road resurfaced. So that's just something to think about, that not everybody realizes that some of those developers do have to pay. And when I say developer, I don't mean a major neighborhood. I'm saying it could be four lots, it could be five or six or eight, so.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stacy Rule. I live at 704 Feltz Bar Street, Carney, Missouri. I appreciate all of your time. I'm going to keep this very basic and go back to the simplicity of what this entails. This is constitutional infringement upon landowners. So let's take this back to common sense. I've heard many terms thrown out tonight, climate warming, inclusion, all of these things. We need to go back to the basics, common sense and the constitutional rights of the people. And as Joanne begged you guys to pass this tonight, as a Clay County resident and as representing many people here tonight, I encourage you and beg you to return to morality and constitutional, upholding the constitutional rights and freedoms of the people that have spoke tonight. And I want, I have one question. Have you all signed an oath to uphold the Constitution?
This is a voluntary board.
Thank you.
Except for the one member who is a county commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I just have one thing left to read that goes back and addresses the climate change, inclusion, all of those things, and is Psalms 24:1. "I believe that God knew all of the things." If He is the Creator of the earth, and He is, then He knew all of this, meaning I don't think we need all of the government overreach. Psalms 24:1 says, "The earth is the Lord's and everything in it. The world and all its people belong to Him, for He laid the earth's foundation on the seas and built it upon the ocean depths." If we could return to that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Bryant Schmidt. Live in Liberty, just on the east side of Liberty, and my family owns a lot of the light blue area, not a lot, there's three or four families here that own a lot of the light blue area that is open space, natural preserves, and all row crop farmers. So as you see here, there's nothing to do with minimum acre split or even potential acre split on the map. And I know that Kip said that, well, if you put it in front of him or put it in front of the board, they, you know, if you rub the magic lamp, you might get your one wish and do that. Well, as a young farmer, and if times come tough one year and I need to sell off 20 acres, or if my family needs to sell off 20 acres, and you guys don't let me and I have to sell off the whole farm, then what's that do for me? You know, I think it means a lot that me as a young, probably one of the youngest guys in here, going up here and being so passionate about how I don't think this is fair for all of the farmers or all the landowners in this area that might have. have to sell off some acres or to make ends meet. Or say, me and my wife don't live down by the farm right now, but say we wanted to move down by the farm to potentially manage it full time or do anything like that. I might need 20 acres to build my house, shed or whatever on. How's that going to go for me? Am I going to be able to? And I know they said again, like, well, they might, they might let you do it. You might have to put it up and give all your reasonings, but if there's nothing set in stone, then they're still up in the air. You know what I mean? Even if you own the property clear and right. And I just don't think that's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Eri Ash, and I actually live within, I guess it's immaterial because I'm 100 feet within the city limits of Liberty. Well, I have a lot of questions about, I guess, the light blue, same thing Smith was talking about back there. Part of that's not even in the 500-year floodplain. So not to have any kind of plans on anything on that and houses and things like that that we can do to develop right next to the city limits, not have any kind of control over that or know what we can do in the future. I think that's leaving a lot of ambiguity to anybody out there to try to figure out anything on that. I mean, we have businesses down there and everything else. I get some of these people want to make sure that there's large acres next to them, but they're also ones that want to stop us as farmers from being able to put in chicken houses, hog houses and things like that and don't want them next to us to make farmland viable at the same time. So there's a lot of those people that want to have their cake and eat it too. A couple of other things too is if you don't like that your ground doesn't perk, maybe read a soil map beforehand, see whether or not you can put in a sewer. They're available, they're free. And another thing that was brought up here was the smoke. Smoke, most likely you're smelling in summertime is the open preserve, the natural spaces that are getting burnt off by the conservation down at Cooley Lake. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Excuse me, I just had one other thing. As a farming family, I, the data collected, I believe, was very biased. Anybody that knows that large landowners and farmers, they don't have time to go to fall festivals or to scroll social media and do all of those things. They're busy in the field providing food for America. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey there, Darren Ross, 12223, Highway 33, Carney, Missouri. The gentleman that spoke all ago, Bryant Schmidt, he is my son-in-law, and he does help farm our family farms down around Cooley Lake, about 2,500 acres. And I totally get what he's saying because I hope he and my daughter actually breed like bunnies and have a lot of kids. And eventually, you know, he would like to move out of the city. He would like to move out of city limits of Liberty. He would like to eventually manage the farm when my cousins are, you know, retired from running the operation. And I hope that all their little kids that are running around, we could say, hey, you know, junior, we're going to give you five acres. Junior, we're going to give you five acres. Juniorette, you're going to get five acres. And I hope that you guys would consider something like this because I know back when I was growing up, that was one of the biggest things my grandma wanted to do. She said, hey, I want you to stay on the farm here and I want to give you a piece of land and build a house. So I went to Carney and built a house. So anyway, I just hope that you guys take that into consideration because I do agree with Stacy. I do believe it's an infringement of personal freedoms and we're all here to make freedom great again. So consider what's, please.
Thank you. Now, you did speak once in favor. This is for those that oppose only.
I did.
We really do have to keep moving.
But those who opposed have gotten up and spoken the second time. So I'm asking you to consider allowing those who are in support of it to be, have that same choice.
We'll circle back. Anybody else that'd like to speak in opposition?
Yeah, my name's Todd Graves. I live at 8460 E Highway in Edgerton, Missouri, which is just west of the northwest part of the county. I'm a landowner and a farmer in the northwest part of the county and understand these are tough decisions. Understand everybody looks at this from the perspective of where they live and how they want to live. Not trying to make belittle anyone's feelings about this because that's what we're all talking about, including me in a lot of ways. But when you have a focus group decide how other people should use their land, they're probably going to focus group how to use it that benefits them the most. And so I'm not sure that really gives us a lot of information. And, you know, we hear a lot about how this green space is somehow for the farmers. If the farmers had their way, there wouldn't be any houses up there. A road full of 20 acre farms with a shed and a house and a mailbox, which you hit with your equipment every time you drive down that road, because the mailbox are on the road, are not more of a burden to farmer or are, in fact, are more of a burden to farmers than a little subdivision in that area. So, you know, this isn't for the farmers. Those farmers out there taking care of those cattle or working those fields, they're not doing it for someone's showtime in their living rooms. They can see them out there and feel good about it. So I just want us to kind of level set what we're talking about here. Is 20 acre ranchettes are worse than a subdivision? There's no way to future repurpose a 20 acre ranchette. Once you split 100 acres into 20 acre ranchettes, it's done. At least if it's a subdivision, you can still farm part of it or you could do something different in the future with that land. So I don't see them as some sort of benefit to the rural community. And a lot of the people that speak on this, and again, everybody has their perspective and everybody's trying to live their best life, but someone was farming that land before they bought their 14 acres and moved up there, and someone across the road probably wished they wouldn't have bought that 14 acres. So, you know, it's sort of the old thing, I'm here now and I want to close the door on everyone else and I want that farmer to wear his overalls and go out there every day and check those cattle so I can look at him. And that's just, I don't think that's a reality that we live in. So I guess the bottom line is, these are hard and I've seen these done in other places. And you draw lines and you have consultants and they draw pretty lines. And then you get into the rules and they change. And in five years, none of this really means that much anyway. But I just ask the commission to be thoughtful about what we're doing here and to realize that we're not preserving the rural character because the rural character anywhere in Clay County is gone. I grew up in an area that was really rural. That's like one house every mile. And we're preserving a certain kind of character for a class of people that are already here and want it to be like that. And that's at the expense of people that may be large landowners or landowners or small landowners. And it's also at the expense of people that may want to come in and participate in that. So I just ask that you keep that in mind.
Thank you. Anyone in the back?
I'll keep it simple, Kip. My name's Zachary Brinker. I'm a licensed land surveyor. I live at, well, I used to live at 29215 Northeast 108th Street. I'm a farmer, land surveyor, conservationist. Everybody had good points about this compromise, man. There's nobody from Olson here that told one thing about this plan and didn't, it looks like they didn't drive a fucking vehicle around this thing. You got green space-
Okay, okay, we're not going to have that-
I'm sorry.
-type of language. So-
I'm sorry, Kip.
Please clean it up. And I want to, I want to say, I did not, I requested Olson not to be here just so the Planning and Zoning Commission is aware.
Okay. Well, you know, somebody that we're, there's 50 people here that's talking about their plan, I think they should have been here to support it or at least tell us why they did what they did.
And again, that was my decision because we are going to be the one enforcing the plan and guiding people-
And I worked great with Kip. Every day, weeks, months, I worked with Kip for the last 20 years surveying. It doesn't seem like somebody that with a half a brain put this stuff together. You have a five acre piece in the middle of the rural area in Clay County and surrounded by 20 acre, or 20 acre pieces. There's not a 40 acre piece of ground in a subdivision, ever. So even if you want to split into two 20s, it's going to be impossible. And you're going to have people come in here planning for, you know, special use permits because they have 120 and 110. I, before this, you know, I didn't get any input in this. There was no, you know, no land surveyors or anybody that actually works in the county got involved with this. Kip hasn't talked to me about it until two months ago. Whenever some people started calling, I was like, hey, Kip, what's this going about? So, you know, I've had a, an employee that wanted to buy 40 acres make five acre pieces in the, in the commercial area that's on 92, on I-29 or I-35. And Kip told him, no, he's like, it's in the planned use area. And he's basically had a big, you know, if he told him not to buy it because it wouldn't be approved for his five acre pieces, even though it fits everything around it, there's five acre lots all around it. So, you know, there's good parts, there's bad parts, but, you know, who's have to deal with it? You know, I have to deal with it, Kip has to deal with it. And what it really boils down to is this zoning. So I think we're going to have to, we're going to have to fix the zoning map to make it reflect this before you, before anybody says anything else. But, you know, I think somebody, you know, that actually works and has to deal with all this stuff should have been, you know, involved with kind of the compromise plan. And that's where I come, you know, where my stand is, is that, you know, I have to deal with people that I say, hey, you can't do it because this is the rules and regulations that Clay County does. And Clay County is by far the easiest county to work with. I work in Platte County, Clay County, Clinton, Ray, Caldwell, Cannon, all over. And I tell them it's easier to work in Clay County than anywhere else. So Kip does a very good job. And I'm sorry for cursing, Kip. And I hope I get stuff approved in the future too. But-
We will see about that.
That's on the record, so. But, you know, commercial on 92 Highway, you know, you can't get a semi down 92 passing each other. And, you know, whenever people look at this, they're going to say, oh, I'm not going to buy this ground because, you know, it's in a commercial area. Or, you know, the area in between Excelsor and Liberty on JJ, you know, there needs to be a little bit more thoughtful process put into this. There's a lot of good parts, there's bad parts. And, you know, the comprehensive plan was, the previous one was really good. And I think we could have grown on that a little bit better before you just go all, you know, go off the rails and go off the deep end and change what everybody's thinking. And I think that's where most people have the problem is that it goes from five acre farms to 40 acre farms and there's no transition because, like everybody else said, nobody can afford a 40 acre farm and develop it because who wants, who can afford a million dollar house?
Thank you.
So, have a good night.
Anyone else?
Dark Tally, 17270 169 Highway, Smithville, Missouri. First of all, say thanks, guys, for your time. I know this is a lot of time put into this with zero pay for most of you up here. Kip also invited me to be a part of the focus group. When this started, quite honestly, I was going through some of the toughest personal times our family had faced over the last couple of years. So I apologize that I'm just now involved in this. What's a saying that, are you listening with, to me with the intent to hear? Are you listening to me with the intent to understand? And maybe that's what I might say about what I'm going to say to you. Because who's not standing up here and who would never be able to stand up here are the residents that we will not be bringing in because of some of how this is focused. You've heard many people say that this is the wrong way to divide up the tract, especially the 20 and the 40, and the parks ground. And I believe this completely. And we can talk about constitution. I mean, I take the emotions out of it. It's just the wrong way to do it. We're going backwards. You go to Clinton County, literally across your line, we'll be dividing threes, fives, we'll be putting in subdivisions. Just to ask you guys to maybe go back and take a look at this. I know you've put a ton of time in this. For that matter, I'm willing to be a part of the focus group going forward. But just take a look at how this map is drawn. I really think it's backwards of how it should be done.
Thank you.
One quick thing I'd like to point out too. I think there's a lot of large landowners here that this would directly affect, that did not receive the mailer for this, and they were, just became aware of this within the last two weeks to 30 days. So, you know, I would encourage you guys to not make this decision tonight based off of this without consulting with the people that this actually affects. You know, based off the survey results, they spoke to 1,400 people. Out of those 1,400 people they spoke to, 68% of those people live within side city limits who this will not directly affect. This will directly affect the landowners, the people that own the ground, the people that pay the taxes on the ground, that work the ground. These people were just recently informed. So I don't feel like it was based off that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Matthew Rule. I'm from Carney. I've lived in Clay County my whole life. It's a wonderful county. Appreciate all your guys' time and your service. But Jordan pretty much said what I was going to get up here and say. I mean, if you only survey 0.5% of the population, I mean, is that realistic? I mean, that, to me, that's completely unrealistic. So I just think at minimum, you should at least table it, think about this, because a lot of people's lives are affected here. So a lot of farms, a lot of families, it's a big decision. So I just think that when you have to make a decision like this, like he said, are you listening to understand, you know, where these people are coming from? It sounds like to me that the majority of this room is against it, or at least against parts of it. And I think you all can get together and come up with something that is more defined, more detailed for like, say, those exceptions that was mentioned earlier, things like that. So I just think at minimum, you just, you know, you should at least table it, think about it. And because, like Jordan said, a lot of these people are just finding out about this. So, and they're here speaking out against it. And, you know, you want to do what's right for the people of the county. If I had to guess, the majority of people in this room, almost every one of us, are about preserving the land, the farmers, the ones for it, the ones against it. We'd love to all preserve the land. Clay County is growing. So it's a decision. I mean, do you want it to grow or do you not want it to grow? It's probably inevitable. It's going to grow. So we just have to go about that, you know, in a manner that's a tough decision, in a manner that's going to, you know, be wise and be for the people. So anyway, thank you for your time and just something about.
Thank you. As they say, going once, going twice, going three times. We're going to close public comments on both sides of it. Thank you. Now we're going to open it up for board discussion. I'd like to start on this side and we'll just move around. If you have no comments, just say no comment. Otherwise, we're going to move around to the end so that everybody can have their say.
I've gone into one of the focus sessions, just to see, you know, who attended and a lot of the deals, a lot of the open thoughts from the county.
And what I see on a lot of the input on it and everything, probably 98% of the input is probably 2% of the landownership. You see a lot of the landowners and it's tough to see the county dictate if you own land on what your land's going to burn. And that's what you're getting on a lot of this. And you, you guys know my opinion, most of the people who move out of the country don't have any business with any more than three acres because they don't know how to take care of it. And if they have 10, they're going to take care of three and the other 10 is going to just go to waste, or rather seven. So that's my thought on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I've been to the focus meetings as well, and I've expressed my opinion. I think our job is to make sure that the county develops in an organized way. And when they came up with a zone around the city limits, you take and you break that into three to five acre tracts, you might as well just build a moat around the city because you can't, the city can't go through that. And I said that multiple times, but here we are, so.
Sure. I have nothing to add.
I think the decision should be mainly to the landowner. When, I can understand when you have 20, 40, 50 acres and you want your family to have five, or when they want to divide it, you know, you can't get a mortgage. You don't want to put your whole mortgage on 20 or 30 or 40 acres. You want the house in five acres. on 20, or 30, or 40 acres. You want the house in five acres. It's more manageable to do it that way. I think it's a case-by-case basis. I think it should be done so everybody has the opportunity to make their case. I've seen it where they wanted to put three-acre lots behind 10-acre lots, and nobody wanted that. But then I see it the other way as well. So it's almost like it should be on a case-by-case basis, maybe go back to the tier system, and take it as such. So, because the county has five acres, 10 acres, 30 acres, 50 acres, everything. And I think that's what it should be.
No comment? And I feel that my position has been to run the meeting essentially. I'm not going to make any of my comments. At this point, I am going to ask for a motion for the case being heard. But whoever makes the motion is going to have to state whether it's for approval, denial, or whether you would like to adjourn and move this to the next meeting. So I'll open it up for a motion.
So if we table and move it, what, are we going to get more questions answered from staff on how to take care of some of these issues, or are we just-
If we table it, if we table it, it would have to be for a discussion at the next meeting, as to what we're going to do. But I'm asking for a motion to approve, deny, or to table it.
And if, can staff make a comment?
Sure.
If you're going to do that, I, my preference would be, okay, if you want to take a month and think about it, great. But if there's any guidance you could give staff that we could work on within that month, that would be my preference. You know, there was talk of exemptions, there was talk of possibly changing the land use map. If there's any guidance that you could give staff, that would be my recommend, that would be my preference, anyway.
So if we gave guidance to staff, is that a few people dictating the way this goes? I mean, what would that look like? Does that go back to your consultants, and they try to take our comments and work it into the plan?
Well, you are the authority that can adopt this plan. Now, as I stated when I gave my presentation, the plan was created by all that input that was received. But you have the authority to amend and change the plan. But yes, I guess you could look at it as the, this meeting dictating those changes. But we would be happy to work with anything that you have.
I think I'd like to make a comment that of the members that did speak on the matter, they were not necessarily positive comments. I think if you can take the comments from tonight that were not positive, we definitely want to hear the comments that were positive. We understand that. But there's a concern in the audience tonight that there are some negative elements that need to be addressed. And of the board members who spoke, the comments were not positive. The comments were negative. And I think we need to take a direction in regards to the extent to which we have limited the 20 and the 40-acre lots with the inability to show on this map the scalability between the two. I understand that the LDC is the document that we typically use for the detail, that does show how we handle the transition between those areas. But I think what we're getting from the community is, if this is our overarching document, that we want to show how we're progressing in the county for development, that the people would like to see a little bit more flexibility in the size of lots, between the stark contrasts that we have on the map now, and given from what I heard tonight, the fact that we have a mix of lots from the 70s and 80s that are three to five. We've consistently, since 2008, tried to stay within the five to 10, the 10 to 20, and the 20 and over. And it just appears that I think people are focusing on the stark contrast of a line, saying, this green area is 40, this green area is 20. And I think people are just struggling with trying to figure out, how can we draw a set line? I think we need to address that. So, again, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Well, I'm, so I'd like some clarification. So if this gets, I mean, there's been a ton of work going into this. If this gets denied, where do you land? Do you go back and try to revise this, to get something that is going to be, I mean, what does that process look like?
I don't think, and I may ask Andy on this, but I don't think there's anything, if it's denied, I don't think there's anything that would keep us from bringing it back in front of the commission. But my preference would be, if you want to work on it, that you not deny it, and that you, you know, Mr. Scarlett gave us a little bit of guidance there. We can go back with Olson and try to rework that. Because, you know, there is a lot more to the plan than just the land use map. So I hate to throw all that away with the land use map. We can work on the land use map, and take tonight's discussion, and make some changes, and present something new to the commission as soon as January, if that's what the commission would like to do.
Kip, if there's a motion to approve, and it is not, it doesn't pass, that doesn't mean that the, that this has been denied. It just, what, what would happen to it?
Would we entertain another motion in that case?
No, if it doesn't pass, then the existing comp plan is what remains into effect, but it doesn't prohibit bringing-
Doesn't prohibit bringing it back.
-Plan B back in a month or two.
Okay.
But it seems like there are very specific objections, not overall objections to the entire plan. So it would probably be more expedient to continue it and let staff work on the land use map, because I don't hear any objections to any of the other parts of the comp plan other than the land use map. Let staff work on that and come back with a revised, and it may take more, especially with holidays and so forth, it may take 60 days, instead of just 30 days, to come back with a revised land use map.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a question of the Parliament here, and that is, so if it was voted to be denied, would it not require someone voting on the prevailing side to, to move, to reconsider? Whereas a motion just to postpone would still keep it, I think, more viable, and would allow us to, I think, probably have a more vibrant discussion. I mean, that sounds logical to me, because it doesn't sound like, it sounds like there were some, obviously, there were some concerns expressed on what was going on here. However, I don't think anybody is necessarily thinking, well, we don't want to necessarily trash the whole thing. I think there were some people that would like us to go back to the original. But I think there are revisions that are probably going to need to be made. And it seems like a reconsideration of it at a future meeting, vote to do that, as opposed to reject it, because that brings in all kinds of other considerations that might throw some doubt on it. So I think that seemed like our best route forward. And then resubmit it, I assume, to the county commission once we've, once we've made some considerations and made some potential changes. Thank you.
You all are in charge. I would just suggest strongly that you consider a continuance of the matter for further consideration and discussion, and perhaps a Plan B land use map in, and I don't know that 30 days is going to be sufficient for that.
I don't think 30 days with the holidays is going to work, if that's what we want to do. You're going to have to push it out to February. But somebody's going to have to make a motion.
If I were to make a motion, I would, I would like to make sure that it is made with the guidance of counsel, just to make sure that it is, has the precision we need. So, Mr. Counselor, could you go ahead and wordsmith the proper motion? Because I don't want to mess it up, basically, because I, I don't want to be the guy that messes it up. So if you could, if you could do it in such a way that would allow us to have adequate time, I think that seems to be discussed here, I will make the motion, but you, but if you could go ahead and make sure that it is wordsmithed in proper form.
I would suggest wording that you move to continue case number December 24-115A to the February 2025 Planning and Zoning Meeting for further discussion and consideration.
I will make that motion.
Do I have a second? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Jerry Nolte.
Aye.
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Mark Bags.
Yes.
Randall Morris. Tom Degenhart.
Yes.
And Chairman Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So that would be the first Tuesday in February generally?
February 4th is the date. So we will bring that back in front of you, February 4th, with a revised land use map.
Thank you. Adjourned.
Actually-
Nope. Sorry, not adjourned. Do we have any additional business?
Yes, I've got a couple of comments. So first, I want to welcome Tom Degenhart, and bless you for this being your first meeting. So, welcome to the commission. I appreciate you being here. And then I want the commission to be aware, we have a, an application that is a massive application that we are going to, for the January meeting, that we are going to send you out the application submittal probably in the next week or two, so you have more time to review it before the, the January meeting. There's roughly 500 pages in this initial submittal, and then our report will come a couple of weeks later. So just be prepared. We want to get it to you as early as we can, just so you have a little bit of time to review it. So just know that is coming early, so check your emails. And that is scheduled to be on the January 7th meeting. I think that's all I have.
Do we have any legal issues?
No, no legal issues.
Adjourned.